You ready?
It is eight.
Yep.
We will stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with the danger of destruction.
Public discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Good morning. I'm Mike Richfield from Elmore. And I just wanted to talk a little bit, I'll make a brief about the planning, zoning, and buying tool. They did an excellent job. They're all here. I just thought maybe several things I didn't think were discussed that I thought of afterwards. It's ironic Ron's here, but the fairgrounds. We talked about the CO2 pipeline. And one thing I'm thinking about is when you think about, you know, the two year or two mile in the planning and zoning is that it's already being utilized by traders and such down in that lower area. I think there's talk, is that right Ron? Maybe yours bring it down there someday. So in some ways, I know what's complicated, I always thought how the fairgrounds is owned. But yet we all use it, all of us in the county, whether you're in the city or not. So you're gonna have young people, people down lower, past the city limits, if they've already used it for trainers and such, but it sounds like even more things are in the works. And as long as Ron is here, Ron, how long does it take to evacuate the fairgrounds on a rainstorm? I mean, when they're done, you know, people hang around and all of a sudden it's people are leaving. Is it a half hour or longer, shorter? What does it take to get?
In a non-emergency, anywhere from half hour to forty-five minutes, you can pretty much clear. But I mean, if we got a heavy rainstorm and they call in and they say eighty-eight feet, I mean fifteen minutes, we can clear.
Okay. Next. Yeah, okay. That was my point of my question. Then the other thing that wasn't brought up was the schools. And when you look at it, high school, if you go across the school itself, then you also have talked about Ushuaas Elementary School, just the proximity of how close it is to the hospital and to the, actually the pipeline. And my other point I wanted to bring up is the development south. I get asked all the time, what you have far in South Elmore, which would be within two miles. And I finally told one realtor, just quick contact. I mean, I just have nothing to say on that. And so I think you have to ask yourself this as we go forward and kind of defend our position, which I appreciate you guys doing everything, girls doing everything you're doing, is that who would want to develop there? If you have a pipeline that you look at the eight inch from Europe, this one's gonna be twenty, I don't know, about six times greater. And then you have to look if you can even be insured through that. And you talk about landlords, there's question whether they can get insurance themselves, having the pipeline and doing nothing, and something happens and they're sued. I think you have to logically ask yourself, I think there's one corporation or company that would want to buy land with that kind of a pipeline on it for any type of development. And we aren't even talking about the new rules that are probably gonna be brought along. So I, I think as we think about planning and zoning of this thing, are you gonna kill development just by just having a transfer type CO2 pipeline like that, hazardous one? My last point is motel. You know, all summer I'll watch, watching, watching minorities that stay out there. I did talk to the owner, and they'll just walk them back and forth down border. There probably is no means of their transportation or any of whatever it is. So I, I think I just, those weren't brought up. I love to bring them up this morning for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public discussion, or are you all here for the same thing?
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Approval of the agenda minutes dated February twenty-eighth.
So moved.
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
Carter.
Carter. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Everybody had a chance to review the claims? Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the claims?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wexler? Second by?
I'll second.
Stacker? Any discussion? Do a roll call both, please.
Now?
Yes.
Wexler?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. We are up to years of service awards? Sarah!
You're way too young to do that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your stuff. Thank you.
Next thing, let the record show that we acknowledge the transfers. Three thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and twelve cents from general basic to secondary road, and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-four and thirty-seven cents from rural basic to secondary road. Now we are up to set the time and date for the max levy public hearing for FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
I am gonna postpone that till next week, because we're still working on the budget. So we are not far enough along to set that, so I'm gonna postpone that until next week.
Okay. And then we're gonna bump up real close.
Yeah, well, the hearing will be the last weekend.
Approved annual renewal rates in plan.
So we think that the annual rates are in your packets?
Yep. Everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Small raise? Anybody have any comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Carter?
Second.
Second by Wexler? Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. One place? Two places? Thank you. Next thing on the agenda. Decision... Hiring Pitney Bowes to move the postage machine.
This is the decision I wanted your input on, so with Derek's new additional employee coming in July, he needs to make space, so we are going to take... Yeah, that back room where the postage machine is now, we're gonna move the postage machine to the old boardroom, and Derek, we're gonna move the supply stuff into the next room, which is where Nick has his supplies, and he's gonna be moving his supplies out of there. So it's kind of moving everything around. But anyway, the postage machine, I put the information in your packet, but there's a lot to moving it, that they charge eleven hundred and thirty dollars to move it. So before I went ahead with that, I wanted to see your opinions on that, and it does say in there, if we move it ourselves and there's damages, that would be an issue, because we do lease that machine, we do not own it. So just wanted to see what you guys thought about that, if you wanna hire them to do it, or if you want us to do it.
Yeah, 'cause this has internal seals and internal scale and...
What do we pay them for to rent that machine or lease that machine?
I don't know, I'd have to look up what that is. I don't know.
I was just curious. I've had some personal experience with those postage machine machines, and they're very intricate. I honestly feel that we need to hire to have them move it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wexler? Second by?
I'll second.
Stacker? And now a discussion? You go ahead, you said you had experience.
Yeah, I've had experience with them, and they're, yeah, like I said, they're very intricate, a lot of different pieces, and one thing gets messed up in it, and the whole machine kinda just goes faulty, so.
Well, I, I think the risk does not outweigh the reward of that small price tag, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Next on the agenda, clarification of longevity for courthouse employees. There was a motion made that we were gonna take away longevity?
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Not, uh...
Does everybody?
Not, not, not removing any longevity that has already been occurred.
Yeah, 'cause that was something with the, it's not in the handbook, right?
Right.
Right. We had to do something, 'cause it wasn't in the handbook. We have a whole bunch of people sitting here, discussion? Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, well, instead of eliminating, Kyle was on the, on the track of adding it to the handbook. Is there a reason why not? Because it was brought up that it was a pain in the butt to figure. Well, if you're gonna let us keep our pay, do we not still have to figure it that way?
Yeah, but eventually it will wear off, 'cause no new employees will, will earn it, or anybody else.
Well, eventually, that's like twenty, thirty plus years. I mean, you've got a lot of people that have invested into that.
I don't think that's the reason why they decided not to do it, but...
Yeah, I...
Yeah. It was.
Well, that was kind of the deciding factor, because Kyle, Kyle was on the discussion, he was gonna add it to the handbook until it was said that it was a pain to figure, and we're still gonna have to figure it. Nothing there has changed.
Your base wage is figured without longevity.
Correct.
So we'll have to go back again and figure your longevity on top of your base wage.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so the math is still gonna be the same, so it hasn't gonna change anything as far as workload? For that office.
Just for newer employees that haven't got to the ten years.
Five.
Even, even the five year, people that are five years, now they no longer have the option to get to twenty. And in the grand scheme of things, for Ipers, I mean, you do the math, that's a significant amount of money that's gonna go towards your Ipers. You've now taken that all away. You say it's not a significant amount, but you lay four hundred dollar bills on the ground. I'm gonna pick them up. I mean, it's a significant amount. In the grand scheme of things.
Isn't it a cent per, per hour, per year, when like five cents per...
Five cents on five years.
Yeah.
Twenty years, that's twenty, kind of twenty cents. So that adds up over the years.
My reasoning would be just if, if we have the money to pay an employee, to pay an employee the wage that we would like to, to pay you, and not, because we have the money, whether you're getting longevity or not, that we're, we're going to pay you what we're gonna pay you, not based on, on based on the job, because otherwise the county is just, we're just holding back five, ten, fifteen, twenty cents, otherwise. I mean, really, that's, it's, it's, it's really more of a...
At the end of the day, it's the same pot of money.
Correct.
It's the same pot of money, but when we're in here bargaining for our wage, we had to fight to get six percent. So now you're pulling that back away, so now we've lost some. Correct? Am I seeing that wrong?
No. No, you wouldn't...
We're not losing you here, but the people going forward are not gonna gain what everyone else has.
But part of, part of your, um, like, if you're here for twenty years, and I'll say Will's here for five, for an example, your, your percentage increases are going to build off of that anyway. So it's, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, if you add a little to the percent, or add a little to the starting salary, your longevity isn't gonna change much.
So when are we doing that?
I mean, I don't have a problem if you're taking it away, just take it away totally and put an extra percent on our raises. Or point, whatever it is. But I'd like to hear it in a motion or a form of that, so we know we're getting it.
You're suggesting...
And then you don't have to figure nothing.
What I'm hearing is suggests is that not keeping the past longevity, but taking it completely away and then just adding a percentage increase.
Well, I mean, if it's a workload, I mean, I would like to think I would be here fifteen more years. So that's fifteen more years, you're gonna have to do it to my salary alone, let alone some of the other people that have it, that plan on probably being here.
Can we transition the current longevity into their current pay and just get rid of it going forward? So it doesn't have to be figured year over year, just put it in their base for now?
Yeah, I guess you guys can make a motion to do whatever you want, I guess.
Having everything be the exact same?
You could figure that out.
I mean, that'd be...
You could come up with same dollars.
That's what we're saying.
Then you...
And, and it would be, and it would be a benefit to the next year's raises because it would be part of your base instead of...
Then you wouldn't be figuring it.
Yep.
Yeah, it wouldn't be backing it up.
Makes sense.
Then, then they wouldn't have to worry about figuring it out.
Right. I can go with that. Don't make a motion, Kyle, since he...
How would you like that worded, so that you have direction to that effect?
To back off the longevity pay and add the same dollars into the base wage.
To put it into the base instead of...
Yeah.
A separate calculation.
Right.
Be simpler that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this decision being made for all county employees or just courthouse employees?
All county employees.
All county, jail staff deputies, rural department, everybody.
Correct.
But, but the, is that motion include no longevity going forward then either?
Yes.
So really, it's the same thing, it's just...
Yeah, it's the same dollars.
Same, same dollars, same dollars with this year, but...
You'll be calculating the raise on top of the...
But it would be a benefit to the current employees going forward for future year's raises, because that longevity piece would be part of their base and getting multiplied. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm, I don't think it would be fair to say, add an extra percent, because for different people...
Well, no, I was just using that for...
Yeah, that's, that's fair, but if you add another percent, it's gonna affect people differently, so I wouldn't say that.
Correct, whatever it is, like, you know, I think, I'm at the five year mark, so if it comes out to point two...
But if we match it up with what you're currently getting, then we're not going backwards at all.
Nobody's, nobody's gonna complain that it's staying the same.
Right.
But if we're, if it's a workload issue, let's just remove it and put it in there and be done with it, so it's gone.
That wasn't the reason it was on the agenda, is because it was a workload issue.
That, that's what you said.
That's, I didn't say that's why it was on the agenda. I said what my thought was.
Okay, why was it on the agenda?
Because it's not in writing once there's no union contracts.
Right.
It has to be in writing to do payroll.
Okay, so what I felt, this is what I felt happened, okay? Unfortunately, I couldn't be there last week, all right? I've been here for twenty-three years, all right? I've met my twenty. Um, I've earned my longevity, um, in that regard, good, been a good employee, all of that stuff. What I felt like happened is through the discussion, and Kyle, you were saying you were, you know, possibility of, um, adding it to the handbook and...
I asked about that, yeah.
Yeah, you did. And what I think happened is it was minimized what kind of impact this would have on employees who had gained the longevity. I think that I listened to the minutes, I, I, I listened to the meeting, I watched it, I heard what was said, and you did say it was a pain, uh, to figure, pain in the butt to figure, um, which we get that, but we all have portions of our job that are kind of that way, all of us. And I felt it was minimized, um, you minimized the impact it would have on employees here.
It's not impacting you at all.
How is it not a...
You don't lose anything.
For us, the people moving forward, how are people, I, I mean, you guys want good employees who wanna stay here, how is it not affecting all the current employees and everybody moving forward?
Well, you're not, you, the people that have been here who are maxed out, it doesn't affect them at all.
It doesn't, but we're here fighting for everyone else.
Yeah, but it's...
And still have to work their way up. That, that's an incentive to stay, that was what longevity was for. And you're told that when you get hired. I mean, I go out and buy a new car, they put a stereo in there, when I drive it off the lot, I really hope they don't pluck that away from me.
But see, that's why this was brought up, that was a part of the union negotiation, that was not in our handbook. So in order to pay, and to pay longevity, it has to be written somewhere.
So can't be right at work.
Well, it, it also wasn't discussed when we did that agreement either, so...
Because that's a board decision, not an employee decision.
Right, and we didn't discuss the longevity when we were doing those negotiations.
You guys didn't discuss anything, she would let you guys talk.
We, how could we discuss anything? Every time we asked, we were kicked out. We tried to talk to you several times, you can, you need to leave, I'll talk to them. So what could we discuss?
But in your proposal, that's part of the bargaining setup.
We've never done it before, Kyle. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Because, because it was...
And she was butt hurt because we went and got a bargaining unit without her. And right now she's figuring out how easy that is with the state. Read all the emails she's been sending.
I haven't seen any of those.
Well, you want me to forward them to you? I'll be happy to.
She's having a hard time getting into the state.
Sure, forward them.
Website. They keep kicking her out.
So it's not an easy thing, where it's just cut and dry. Like I said, there is a contract in front of Roger. It's been there, it disappeared once already, so...
Go ahead and read it, I passed it down for you to read.
No, I, I looked through it.
Okay.
Did you look through it?
I haven't seen it, no.
When I talked to Roger, he was under the assumption that we discussed it was about the contract.
Can this be stapled?
Sure, you can staple it.
Okay, I don't wanna have papers flying everywhere.
The last page, longevity. Yeah, towards the end there.
Towards the end.
Trying to get a general feel for where everything is, too. Okay. So with it being in this agreement, does that satisfy the requirements of having it written somewhere?
Or, um, the courthouse, but not for...
Not for anybody else, not for the sheriff or anyone.
If it's written in the handbook, then we don't have a union.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
And that contract has not been approved, correct?
No, it has not been approved.
I mean, I haven't seen it until now, so I'm, that ain't gonna happen today.
Well, it's not on the agenda for today, so...
Yeah, I know.
So is it a bad thing, in your opinion, to offer longevity, to entice someone to stay longer and be a good employee?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, but at the end of the day, I mean, one, one cent a year? Is it worth? One, is it worth the extra figuring? Not saying it's, that's the end-all, be-all reason by any means, but if, if you're going to pay that dollar anyway, why would you have it on a separate equation?
Good question.
I mean, that, for my own work, I streamline whatever I can. I, I don't know, I don't know why it would have to be broken out in that regard, so... If, if it gets included with your base pay, and we have had to make adjustments to the starting wage, so I would say that has been kind of factored in for some newer employees. Not the longevity specifically, but we've been making adjustments as necessary, so, um, I, I don't know what the incentive is to keep it separate. For you guys, it would be a benefit if it was included, and you move forward with it as part of your base.
Could it be something as you just put a penny every year? You could go to every year. You just add it, like if we're supposed to get a four percent raise this year, it's four percent plus a penny for every year you've been here.
What's the point in that? I mean...
That's still longevity, that's, then you still have to take it.
Yeah, but with your percent raise, I mean, if you're gonna make it four percent plus a penny, why don't you make it four point one percent? It...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I'm offering you...
It's the same pot of money.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing, the same pot of money.
So why would you separate it?
I'm not saying separate, I'm just saying something that people know that they're getting.
You're getting a percentage.
That we would have gotten that percentage regardless.
Because, well, yeah, I mean... I don't know. I, I think it would streamline things, put it into your base, and then your future percentages would build off of that as well.
I'm in favor of that. Just simplifies everything.
I mean, and that's...
And in order to...
That applies, that concept applies to other things. We've got people on different times they get paid, um, we've got different schedules all over the place, and I guess, I think some of that should be addressed too, but how and when you do that still has to be discussed and worked through. So that's obviously not a today issue, but in general, there's a lot of different pieces of the puzzle here, and I don't know why they have to be different, so...
To me, I, I address, you want people to stay, we're having a hard time hiring people, 'cause our wages are low to start with. We've been trying to adjust that, so that kind of takes a lot of longevity out of it, because we're starting them at a higher pay scale than what we planned on before, and we might have to address that in the future again, I don't know.
Probably will.
Well, and a cent a year...
Well, and I I sent a year raise or for longevity, looks very different today than it did thirty years ago, it just does.
Well, the the raises weren't consistent years ago, they didn't give raises every year, longevity was a reason to have it.
And and you can. That's not an incentive to go work for a place if you, if I'm looking to make twenty cents more in twenty years.
I mean, and and when you look at twenty years of longevity, yeah, it comes out to four hundred bucks, but if you look at. Yeah, I I can do the math, but when you, when you break it down on a per year basis, twenty bucks a year? I mean. Yeah, if you see a twenty dollar bill laying down, you might pick it up too, but it's.
I think the whole concept that I hear, I mean, twenty years to be here is a long time, and we come it out, there was like over thirteen people that we could count, just. Between across the street here that were fifteen years and up. When I came here, this is the place you wanted to work, you wanted to come here, and I can name a lot of things that have been taken away, and I think that's where it comes from. It's not even the twenty cents a year, because is that what we're work for here every day, we do our job, we deal with the public, is that great as they can be? We run an office with two people down in our office, just to speak to our own. It's just, it seems like it's just so much take, and we have to come in here and get tempers blaring to just get our raise, when honestly. It's just, it just gets to me, cuz I don't know that, some of you know what each job really even does. And it's a lot, it's a lot to come in here every day and know that the public is gonna come in and get mad, or you see people waiting in the hallway. We chose to do appointments after COVID because the state told us to, we keep doing them. And we still get walk-ins, and again, we're running it down there with two people, when one's gone, it's one. So twenty cents really, no, it's not big, four hundred over a year is important to me, but honestly. I'd be like twenty, twenty cents. I mean, I can't, that's what we're here talking about for some of us. So it is really hard, but again, it's just take, we're just, I feel like it's just a lot of take, so it's just hard.
See, and I, I can, I can understand that point of it, but. I don't think any of us had the intention of taking that away, it was streamlining and incorporating it rather than removing. So, I mean, that's, like I said, it's obviously not the only piece of the puzzle, but. I didn't see it as a big detriment going forward, because it's not, it's not going to change. Or even from my thought last week, it wasn't going to change. What your actual paycheck now, moving forward, is going to be for next year, it would be for future years, so then. That could be built into that percentage or whatever as part of it, because you wouldn't be getting it at that point, it's not taking anything away. It's changing.
Wasn't what was said, though, as long as you're clarifying that, that going forward.
Yeah.
But it, it was. It was never said to take anything away. It was never said to take anything away.
To anybody that's many or twenty years, there's gonna be no change.
No, I'm not here for, I'm here for them, I'm not here for. For the future.
Intermedium.
Does anybody wanna change what the motion was?
I guess everybody wanting to look, look at removing and adding.
Well, you, we already, we did, but you could change it into base pay.
Well, basically, we'll just include.
I think, I think we should.
Into the base pay.
I think we should clarify that change, because that would be something that was not said last week, and as. Like I said, it's not, that was not my decision maker on it, but as far as streamlining, I think that is a. Piece that is an added benefit, um, but I would make a motion to. Remove the longevity going forward and add current longevity into their base pay. For current employees. Would that clarify it fairly?
I think so, remove longevity going forward. And.
Longevity going forward and add it to the base pay for current.
We have to, it's already, we have to work at a little bit different because.
Calculate it into the base pay.
There you go. Calculate existing. Existing longevity.
Yeah.
Calculated into base pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
Is that, that makes sense to me now.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the intent of what I was saying.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion would read. Base.
So.
I can't meet that.
So, um, going forward, you mean effective after June thirtieth?
Correct, yeah, you can clarify that in the motion.
Okay, so remove longevity.
That was part of the last one, too.
After June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and calculate existing longevity into the base pay, effective. July first.
Right, that would work.
Okay, Stacker made a motion, I don't have a second.
I'll second.
Whacter? Any discussion? Any discussions from the public?
This is countywide?
Except for second three of it, because they do.
They have a union.
Since my twentieth is for this now, am I?
This doesn't take effect until the next fiscal year, so yes, you will be.
Yeah.
Yep.
So this is non-union employees, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
So as a department head, I would need to negotiate for differential in wages for our employees that are not represented by a union?
Correct, you would.
I wish I'd have known that two months ago, because I'm sitting here with people that have longevity, but they also don't have shift differentials. Like a lot of employers have, uh, because they work nights and weekends. So that's one of the incentives as a department head for my employees that have only been here less than twenty years, fifteen years, ten years, five years. Is that they knew that there was something coming down the road, but I'm not saying that I'm against, I'm fine with what you're doing, cuz I think it simplifies it. But as a department head, then I'll change how I'll negotiate future for employees, because I need to make sure that uh they all understand that. Without longevity coming forward as I hire them. They are um, you know, responsible to work a lot different shifts than other county employees now that we don't have a union. Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
Nat?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Thank you for coming in, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Next thing on the agenda, dissolve the twenty eighty agreement between workforce development and Dusse County?
Yeah, we have, we have that listed resolution form, um.
I haven't heard that one for a time.
I haven't heard anything from either, but it does have all of our counties listed, um. Well. Actually, this has more than our ten counties, and I just, I just pulled it up as I got here.
Is that the resolution? Or is that?
It's, yes, well, this would be the, this is the twenty eighty, maybe I, I was in a different.
Um, are you gonna, you're gonna have to.
Yeah, we'll have to table it.
That's, no, hold on.
Oh, you're talking about something.
I I opened the wrong document.
To him about that?
Right.
No, uh, well.
Yeah, we'll have to strike through that.
So I talk to them and then once they get that changed.
Here, let me, let me print this off quick. I need to enable printing.
Absolutely. Maybe.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Were you, did you have some public discussion?
It's next on your agenda.
Okay.
I was just curious what that's for.
Okay, good, I don't, came in too late or it's.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
I knew it wasn't at the top of your list, so I didn't have to be here right away.
I don't know what's at the top of the list anymore.
All the meeting to order.
Yep. Every year, it gets more complicated.
Well, our list actually technically started yesterday.
True.
The budget's.
I can remember when we used to go through the meeting and they have nobody here.
Which which do you prefer?
Nobody here.
That was a lot smoother, don't it?
It does. But, but, you know, it's all good. Thank you.
So is this what we're approving then, or?
Yeah, so this, this references are um. Are twenty eighty, and in the twenty eighty, there is a section that it has to withdraw. You have to uh, t- t- termination by counties, county may withdraw from this agreement by resolution of their board supervisors. And provide said withdrawal to the CEO board at least ninety days prior to the beginning of the upcoming fiscal year, so.
It's time to do it.
This is um. A resolution to put it in the correct form of what we already discussed and voted on, so it's. It's a formality, but um. Carter, do you have any questions? Cuz you were gone for that discussion, but I didn't know if you.
Well, I know we've mentioned bits and pieces here and there, I mean, I kinda have an idea what.
Yep, yep.
Well, I I see no reason for Todd to look at this other than.
So, yeah, it, it's not. I mean.
It's simple, it's a resolution.
It's simple, it's not committing money, it's not anything, um.
Well, we're taking, we're taking uh liability away from this county.
It is, it is binding, so um, that is, um, that is the piece of it, but. When we discussed it the first time, we just didn't have the actual resolution, um.
I meant binding as committing to, like, into something new, that's.
Yeah, we're, we're removing the liability, so, I guess, yeah, it's, it's fairly simple, we already discussed it. It already voted unanimously to dissolve, so this is just putting it on a. Um, our executive director had shared it to us, um.
Okay.
I think she did most of it on there, but I can't say for sure.
I filled that much out? Do I have a motion to approve?
Do we need a resolution number?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so that would be some, cuz isn't that the day?
Seven twenty-three oh one.
Yeah.
Zero three, zero seven, twenty-three, oh one.
And then I would make the motion to approve that resolution.
Say the number.
Zero three, zero seven, twenty-one oh one.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing done, do a roll call vote, please.
Nat?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Please, Kyle, we've got ten minutes on here, we didn't even need it.
There you go.
Well, that's good, like, be efficient.
Okay, next on the agenda. Discussion decision appoint planning and zoning commissioner. We need another one?
See, I think no, that should have been um. Administrator instead of commissioner, but, um.
I'm, I'm confused now.
Yeah, and I, I didn't think about it until um. Last night, this morning, I was like, wait, and I was too late by then, so it didn't matter.
Cuz we did the commissioner.
We, the commission is full.
We're full on the mission, um, but. For the administrator, I think with the CO2 um hearings that are in the works and stuff. It might be a better idea to get through some of that and address it again, so I guess.
As a commissioner or as a administrator?
Administrator, not commissioner, cuz we're, we got that covered.
Okay, so.
Is it, we had been shared that the the minutes from a decade ago, or whenever when it was supposed to be a temporary.
Yeah.
Two to three month until they found somebody, and we are a decade later.
So I mean, that's.
So this is stricken from the agenda.
I, I was.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I would just say no action, just leave it alone, um, but as far as putting it back on, I don't know if you guys wanna just. Wait and talk about it again after the planning and zoning hearings for CO2 pipeline are done, or what do you think, but.
Or, we can ask our administrator what he thinks too.
Yeah, you better have the current administrator in here when.
Well, yeah, he's not here today too, but um. I've been doing some research and having some conversations around that, so still looking into it to do. Due di- diligence to the topic, but um, yeah, I don't.
Do we have a person in line?
Oh, being as.
I.
We should wait till it's on the agenda.
You, we better not discuss it.
Nah, for today.
Yeah.
You, you, you can't discuss it today.
No, but as far as putting it back on the agenda, I don't know if we wanna just wait till those hearings are done, or.
I would say wait, because changing that in the middle of it, throwing someone else into it, and.
I, yeah, I don't know that right now would be the best time to make that change, but.
Well, that's, I'll just drag it and we'll put it back on when we're ready, put it back on, yeah.
Okay, that works.
Next to, is anybody here?
Sorry to get your hopes.
Is there anybody here to represent Doug?
Not that I am aware of, but he's in the.
Did you call down to, is Lisa here?
Lisa is one oh two.
Right, one oh two.
I don't think I'm right. Hey Lisa, this is Kyle in the boardroom, um, do you have someone to come up for the detour agreement? We are. Perfect, thanks, bye. I didn't see the numbers on there, and then all of a sudden.
I saw the name, I saw the name pop up.
Well, the name goes in it now?
But it, it didn't show up until she actually answered.
No, it, as soon as you punched it in, I saw Lisa Hefty show up right there, and then it, then it showed, um.
Did it transfer across to Baton Rouge?
So it showed that you, well, it showed here that you were calling Lisa Hefty, and then as soon as she um. Answered, it showed something else.
Yeah, it's, it changed, I saw something change. I sat, I was in here when they did technology Thursday for the phones, but I was at my computer doing stuff here, so I didn't. Didn't catch all that. New updates. No, all free.
I answered your question.
Morning, guys. How we all today?
Good, how are you?
Yeah. You got the Iowa fifteen project detour?
Yep.
Um, any questions?
Yeah, what's, what's the?
Just south of Fenton, that first Montos lagoons, here in the lagoons, they're gonna tear that bridge out, replace it with a box cover.
Okay, the state.
State, yep. Yeah, so they need to use our road to detour during the project.
Do you have the motion?
Yes.
Do you have a?
Hey, they're putting your, your favorite thing, Roger.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ox cover.
I like my skull bits.
I think everybody likes, you know, you do. Reverse a world with large loads of equipment, why not?
We're gonna have to do this, resolution, just a motion.
Just a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion here that requests that the Iowa Department of Transportation be allowed to use B nineteen. As a detour road for, road for a bridge replacement. Does anybody wanna make that motion?
So moved.
Send your area, you have a second?
Yeah, I need a second. Carter?
I'll second. I was gonna let you if you wanted to.
That's fine, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Folks, motion carried unanimous.
All right. Just need a signature on this for me, Roger.
Yep.
And we should be good to go.
But you guys may or may not know, but they compensate us for that.
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, for that being brought up.
They put up new signs.
Yeah.
Bear in mind, some of the signs also, you need your requirements test.
Yeah.
Obviously, not that they're changing signs, just a larger size, essentially.
Well, basically, not that are changing signs, just a larger size, essentially for the, yeah, traveling homes. All right, thank you, guys.
That's it, we know, no construction, nothing interesting?
We're kinda, we're kinda boring, Roger.
You are. What, what are we gonna do to make life more interesting? You know where we're at, if you want us, come find us.
All right, that's what you're gonna, sorry, we're not sorry, but cross those ones off.
We, we cleared a discussion with the auditor, right?
No, we haven't, well, we haven't done auditor discussion.
That's what you just said.
That's what you just said.
Yeah, we, we got to it, yeah.
Yeah, do, do you wanna do it now, and? Or you wanna take a break? I don't see anything.
Are we doing? Just do it now, we can get the. Yeah, are we doing, are we doing any budget stuff right after this?
I, I wanna talk to you about what transpired, um, and then, then we can talk about it, so it won't take too long, I don't think.
Would you prefer a break, or just go into it now?
Uh, it's up, completely up to us.
Why, why don't we take a break now?
Couple, couple, man.
And then we'll be back in ten minutes?